Good morning. Good morning. Welcome to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting, Monday, June 15th. Please rise for the Pledge of Leitens.
I pledge the leitens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Yep.
Okay. May we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Here. I didn't do my gravel again.
That's all right. We're good.
No public hearings? Today, I'd like to talk about time for the county commissioners to consider hiring a professional engineer on the staff that can be paid for with monies that are out there just by tweaking them. And if I were to have a motion to hire this person, then the council would have it on the agenda, or when they do their budget hearing, we would put it on our July 1st budget. If they denied it, then it would get denied. But we have 800-some roads, miles of roads, 1,600 miles of ditches, 194 bridges, 14 buildings that are not being looked over by someone professional in that line of civil work. And I think it's time that the county makes up to it.
What was you talking about tweaking?
Improving our roads. I had the pleasure of being down in Wayne County. A fellow commissioner told me that this year, they did not have any pothole problems down in Wayne County. So Thursday, I was at a meeting all day, nice tourism meeting. Afterwards, I drove 26 miles around Wayne County. And folks, I did not see one pothole. And you're welcome to take the same drive. And what they have is a 10-year plan on paving. And the man that did it for them a few years ago is now working at Endot. And the man who followed him is following the plans.
What county was that sheriff?
That was Wayne County, Richmond, Indiana. And I think we deserve something like that around here. So the silence tells me that the commissioners do not agree that we deserve better around here.
That's not the case. I too drove through Wayne County yesterday. And I would agree with you that I did not see any potholes. However, I did see a lot of patches.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because I agree. And what they're using as a chip and seal on a road that maybe had been paved, let's say, two or three years ago, but they go over it with a chip and seal. And when I was down there, I did bring a little bag and I left it in the car. But they're using a rounded stone instead of a number 10 that tends to have a lot of points to it. And I did appreciate the fact that when they did find a patch that needed to be replaced, they cut it out and it was a square as such. So it was very professionally done. I think their equipment, and I've not ever been to their garage, which I would like to go see some of their equipment, because equipment is so important. And around here, our equipment is getting very old and does need to be replaced. We will talk about that later in the agenda. But I'm glad that you did go down and see them, because I couldn't really believe it myself. But that's when you have someone that is a professional and they know how to get things done and saves a lot of money. I mean, it's going to take us 10, 15 years to get caught up. It really, really is. Okay. We'll move on then. Approval of minutes, please.
Make the motion approved June 1st minute. I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. We have some contracts and Mrs. Meyer has an LPA consulting contract for us.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
This supplement is for right-of-way engineering services for the Nebo Road, State Road 332 Gateway project. This is just for the area to construct the new enhancement. And the additional fees are for $5,845, which 80% are reimbursable. Keep in mind, this does not include the buying.
That's still proceeding or have they completed that yet?
The design?
The buying?
No, we have to do this step first.
Okay. But they're negotiating?
No.
Are they not?
This takes care of it.
Oh, I thought.
Step-by-step.
Well, I thought I heard it.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consulting contract supplement.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you, Andy. Okay. Then we have the sheriff's Delaware County.
We have the new sheriff here, Ray Dudley.
Oh, he's over there behind the podium. Sheriff, stand right up, please.
Sorry about that. Congratulations, Sheriff.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Let's give your name and rank and address.
Got my social security, too.
Right into there.
Okay. My name is Ray Dudley. I'm your new sheriff, Delaware County. Can you hear me?
Is your good light on?
No, it's not. How about now? There you go. Okay. My name is Ray Dudley. I'm the new Delaware County Sheriff. I was elected on the 5th of this month by the Democrat Caucus. So far, the first week's been pretty hectic. Had a lot of things going on since the departure of Sheriff Scroggins. So things have just kind of been floating by until I got there to do some changes and get some stuff going. Just so everybody knows that I did, I was able to make a staff already. So there's a few changes there. My three positions that we changed is Chief Deputy. That is Dave Spence Jr., who was one of our investigators and was in charge of the SMART team. He's a very good young man. He's got a lot of knowledge bringing with him, being a second-generation police officer with Delaware County. His father, Dave Spence Sr., has been with our department for 35 years and probably will be there after I leave. But then my captain in uniform is here today, and that's John Holding, sitting up here in the front row.
Have you done?
Really, really tall and skinny. That's John. John's a, was my sergeant on the road. He's a very good man. He treats people fairly and he's a good guy. So he'll do a good job with our officers for the road deputies. Rick Richmond, which was in his spot, is our new jail commander, which is very important. Rick is a very good man with good morals, and he used to be a correctional officer. So I believe for our correctional officers upstairs who sometimes don't feel like they're joined to our department, having somebody look as a jail commander that actually came from their rank will be good in aspiring to them that, hey, good things do come to you if you work hard. So Rick will do a great job up there.
Thank you for filling us in and welcome. And we hope if you can't make it, just send the...
I will be here at every meeting. I work Monday through Friday. My phone's on on the weekends. Sherry's called me a lot when I was just on the road, so I'm sure now that I'm sheriff, she'll call me even more. So James and I grew up together and Rick and I worked together on, or Shannon and I worked together on the road, so.
Sheriff, I'd like to relay a message I heard the other day. You were one of the first class that took the CIT training.
Yes, ma'am.
And would you just briefly tell the public what that is?
CIT is Critical Incident Team. And basically what it is, is we go out and we deal with individuals with mental and physical handicaps. What we found over the last 20 years or so, now that we've gotten in and establishing these different classifications on people, is that a lot of people in our DOC systems are people that really, if caught early, would not have been there. Whether it had been a mental issue or it was a physical issue, maybe if it was stopped at the local level and got them the help that they needed, they wouldn't have ended up in DOC. So this program really helps out in training officers and correctional officers to pick up on the signatures of this and helps us get them the help that they really need so that we can hopefully keep them away from either being incarcerated locally or in a state facility.
And get that help to them.
Yes, absolutely.
And you know, that's when you and I kind of met each other. I was just a new rookie commissioner. I attended your graduation. I never will forget that day, because you know, coming in as a commissioner, it's so hard to remember people's names, but you and another gentleman just kind of looked like twins and I called one of you the wrong name. And I said, oh yeah, you're the good-looking one. And we won't go there and say which one that was.
The other guy was Stephen Scull, by the way.
I did hear the other day that in that class, and I think there were about 35, 40...
Yeah, we had about 40 members in there.
That you were one that did stand out. And so it was a nice compliment and they wanted me to relay to you that they were trying to become a sheriff.
Yeah, we're going to try, we're going to try to make sure that every correctional officer we have is trained in CIT.
Yeah.
It is a very good program.
And even the 911 operatives and...
Yes.
But welcome today and we have to talk now of money. So excuse us as we are trying to get you strengthened after what you've said.
Okay.
And James King, Commissioner King has been working with you and we appreciate James doing that.
Yeah, Sheriff Dudley and I last week sat down and we spoke. And what we're going to do with this contract is we'll finish paying him out this year of what Sheriff Scroggins was supposed to earn, which I believe come out to be $58,334.54. And we'll come back around November and sit down with Sheriff Dudley and discuss a contract moving forward, maybe with some tweaks and stuff in that contract. So I would like to make a motion to go ahead and accept this contract with Sheriff Dudley today.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Hold on before we go on. Do we need to make that retroactive also to go back to when he was appointed, I believe, June 4th?
Yes. Probably start on the 5th.
Now, make a motion that we make it retroactive back to June 4th when Sheriff Dudley was appointed.
Then I will second that.
To take your contract. To take the contract, all right.
Yes.
Then we should be good.
Okay. Very good. Roll call.
We're, you're...
Yeah. I'll just remove my motion.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Turning to the second page. Ordinance 2015-011 creating a fund for the ISDH Ebola. Is Mr. Bane here? Bane?
Yes, it's just for the second reading.
Second reading, okay.
Yeah. I'll make the motion. We accept ordinance number 2015-011.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Resolution for approval regarding sale of county property, and that would be 2015-021. The commissioner has been talking for a couple of years, maybe even longer, that we have 182 acres of farmland and I believe it's 20, oh, it's 114.25 acres of farmland and 26.5 acres of woods out east of town. And we've just really come to a point where we could use the money, some things around here. And so we're in the process of wanting to sell it. And I'll lay our team a motion.
For those of you who are aware of that property out there, we are, we do wish to keep the frontage along State Road 32 there. So we're not getting rid of everything. We're going to keep some of that ground in case the county needs it in the future. So I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution, 2015-21. Second.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. And that we will have to get the two appraisals and a public hearing is going to be held. But we hope to have an auction come September and get that taken care of. Okay. Now we have a resolution, 2015-022, for agreeing to empty, emptyfie the curb for use of the Odyssey accounting software.
Mr. King, could you step forward?
Mr. King, you read this resolution?
I have.
Because we don't have the software or anything yet, correct?
Correct.
I would like to make a motion to table this resolution until we get the software. And at that point in time, if there are issues with Mr. King's, the software that Mr. King will be using, then at that time, I think we should move forward with the resolution.
I'll second it. Is that fair, Mr. King?
That's fine. I didn't, I knew you and I had the discussion and we, I didn't realize we were moving that fast on that.
Yeah, I could dodge right away until we get the software also.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any department heads here, like the officials, that would like to speak?
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
The Hamilton Township Fire Department, our Delaware County EMS service, I believe should be recognized by the commissioners today for even at our last meeting for the fire that they had out in Country Village. They acted very professional, did a great job, and ended up and saved two lives. You know, for that, I think they should be commended by the commissioners for their efforts and everything that they did that day or that night. So I'd just like to say thank you to them. I wish we would have had some of them up here today, but they did a great job.
They did.
And the 911 staff?
Yes, and the 911 staff, they handled everything very professionally.
Someone make that a form of...
No, I just want to make sure that they were recognized.
Very good. Nothing else out there? Okay. We have a payments of claims, $964,006.82.
I'll make a motion to pay claims. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. Any public here would like to speak or any subject of your concern?
My name is John Dunfer. I live at 20100 North, County Road 885 West, Gaston, Indiana. We have not seen a county truck in our area since 2000. The roads in that area are absolutely unsafe for public transportation. There is no way that a small vehicle can get through some of these holes without damaging a vehicle. Now, I understand that we have 800 miles of road, 1,600 miles of ditches, side ditches. Come out and look at the road. They are driving in the side ditch. They are driving in the farmer's field. They are driving in the yard. We need some help. This is an emergency. This isn't something that just can go on. The Muncie Star delivers our paper out. She has turned in claims of over $1,000 on her vehicle. The postal delivery lady says that most of the roads that have not been patched in any way, she can't drive over five miles an hour. Now we're talking about putting part of them back to stone or gravel. The VA Administration, Home Administration says that they will not loan on a house that is on a gravel road. We're not asking you to pave the road. We're asking you to patch them. Because I guarantee you that you will damage a vehicle if you go over five or 10 miles an hour. The county came out on Road 1200 North between 600 West and 700 West. It was called in because the farmers out there had damaged a vehicle heavily on that road. They worked on that road two days. They haven't finished a mile yet.
Mr. Dunfer, I really don't know what else we can do because I've been out there and I agree with you. And the monies, we have a list today of what they have done already, and that's about all we're going to do this summer, patching. And I do feel for you, but...
I would like to comment on that. Quit building roundabouts. Tearing out perfectly good intersections, putting one to $3 million when we could be patching roads? We're not asking for a roundabout in our, we're asking for holes to be patched.
Andy, would you like to explain how we get the money for the roundabout?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. The MVH and the Wiltex does not go towards any of our roundabout projects. Those are paid with federal highway funds that are allocated for that project only. So we can't just spend it anywhere that we want to. We would love to, but we can't. Match funds come through edit funds or bridge funds. Those are how those projects are constructed and paid for. Just want that on the record.
Man, I'm sorry, but your grant doesn't mean anything to us.
But I just want you to know that...
We pay both ends of that grant. The 20% of the county has to pay.
You've got to understand, when it comes to a federal grant, they stipulate how that can be used.
We understand that.
So like when it comes to the, and I understand what you're saying, but you know, she explained that when it comes to a federal grant, they stipulate how that grant can be used. We can't go in and take that federal grant and just use it how we see fit. The, you know, if you've got a problem with that, then you'd have to take it up with the people that give us the federal grants. We can only use it for what they tell us to use it for.
Mrs. Meyer?
Like you said, we would love to be able to take some of that money and fix some of our roads, but we can't because the federal people says you can use it for a roundabout.
I don't, I don't see...
You can use it for a bridge.
I don't see Marta here today, but kind of explain that, the process, because we have the committee that makes the recommendation and then the committee chooses those.
The large projects that you see and read about in the paper, there are many years of planning going on. And it's programmed through our PO Director, through our tip, and the STIF, which is through Endot. Roundabouts are funded through CMAC funds. I can't use it just to build a road. It's air quality money that goes towards that project. That reduces emissions when you do a roundabout and helps with safety. But the funds get approved project-specific. It's not just, here's $100,000, you can use it how you want. It's only for that location, only for that project.
To move traffic and it goes through a lot. And of course, the weather, 10 days of rain, I hear we might be having, or seven days now. But Chris, the only thing we can do is just try to get them on there the next sunny day. Because if we give our word, we want to follow through on it.
First of all, Mr. Dunfer, you said you hadn't sent a county truck out there all year, but you've seen them up there patching 1200 North. Okay, what other roads can you identify that the worst is the worst?
Eight, they haven't been west of 850.
You're right, there was some talk about gravel land. You're right about that.
Why don't we put the roundabout back to gravel?
I'm just trying to get a little bit...
No, no.
I don't know about...
Well...
I know.
I'm just identifying what roads. I'll try to get some on there. I mean, we spent $400,000 probably.
Well, I don't think either of you have a clue what you use money for with the roundabout.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. If you'd be more specific, I'll be more glad to go up there and take a look at it.
Explain, explain.
More specific is any road west of 850. And if you want to come out, I'll go with you, but you bring your vehicle.
900 and 800 was talking about gravel.
Andy, could you check in about the VA not loaning on gravel roads?
Yeah, because I'm surprised, because I know there's counties that have over 400 miles of gravel.
Yeah, yeah. I would like, we're going to check into the VA will not loan on a gravel road, because that is...
Thank you.
Because we, there are about 14, 16 miles. And I know you don't want a gravel road, but compared to that one that we put back, I think they're happy out there on that 900 North, because they really did a nice job. I mean, those potholes were as big as that chair wide and deep, I mean, deep. So...
Well, you, according to my neighbor, Mr. Foster...
You're not the, talk in the microphone, please.
You talked to Mr. Foster.
I've been at Mr. Foster.
About putting his road back to stone.
South of him, south of him.
Yes.
And one thing I'd like to do is try to get the count on those roads. I mean, the school bus goes up and down there every day, you know? But I tell you, there are some nice-looking gravel roads out there. They do take high maintenance sometimes. They do take high maintenance. But we'll just have to work on this.
Chris, you'll take a look at it and see what's...
Sure, I will. And I know, I know we're talking about 800, 850 and 900. I know them roads are bad and we simply haven't figured out what to do with them yet.
But then...
I mean, that, he's not lying. He's right about it.
We need to get the chip and seal going.
You know, we've been trying to get portions of the county, the whole county covered, not just one.
I know.
If I may add, Marta Moody and I are working on a project through her planning dollars, it's a whole other ball of money, to do a payment management system program.
The paper.
And it will evaluate every single road in Delaware County. It'll be put in a database and we'll put a budget and a program for several years. And it's something we can maintain and keep current. And Marta and I are working on advertising for proposals for that project to come up soon.
How much you think that'll cost? Is it...
I'd say $10,000.
For the whole county?
No, for the city.
Are we doing a, are we doing a...
For the whole county, oh gosh.
Are we doing a RFP on it?
Yes, we'll be doing a RFP. 80% will be reimbursed. I'm really not comfortable giving out that number yet. I'll know more when we sit down. And she has some information from some other counties that have done this, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Nobody, nobody that has a business of any kind... Nobody, nobody that has a business of any kind would be allowed to have the roads in the condition the public travels in their business. They just wouldn't be allowed it. I mean, these roads are, and if you're, you're talking about now, doing nothing the rest of the year?
Well, I would hope we could get the chip and seal out there and put a seal, because I was on a road yesterday coming down 900 west and there were some roads that were paved two or three years ago that are starting to get the crack. Now, if we get the chip and seal out and work on getting that chip and seal over that, that will prevent eight years from now, that road needing paved. That's what they're doing down in Richmond and Grant and Wayne County. They're doing it chip and sealed. Every four years, those roads get chip and sealed.
900, 900 west that you're talking about, west of I-69.
900 west.
You better bring out some chipping and sealing.
I think 900 west is, you said 69.
No, no, there's a, there's a portion of 900 west, but it's only the other side.
Well, we appreciate you coming in today and sorry you had to come in and tell us.
Just real quick, I also went through Randolph County.
Yeah.
A couple of days ago as well. We had an emergency meeting with some other counties, phone conference, Henry County, Randolph County, Grant County, and there's, Delaware County's not the only county to have rough roads. I went through Randolph County, like I said, and they got, they have some terrible roads there. And I know, I'm friends with the commissioner there and they are working on those also. It just takes time, a lot of manpower and a lot of money. But the, all these counties are in, in rough condition right now. And everybody's doing the best they can in all these counties to try to get these roads built back together.
We're not talking about rough roads. We're talking about roads that must have been.
Sir, I understand that and those are the roads that I traveled this, this weekend. I, I understand what you're saying. But I think, again, it takes time, manpower and money to get all these repaired. And we are currently still repairing the roads. We're not stopping.
If Mr. Henry or Mr. King gets out in our area, because Sherry's been up there, ask them if they want gravel roads. Just stop and ask them. Nobody out there wants gravel roads. We just want roads that are patched. We know you can't resurface all of the roads. Nobody's asking for that. We're just asking for somebody to make the roads safe so we can drive down them. I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Entertaining motion recessed then.
Motion recessed. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.